We call this September seventeenth, fifty-sixth meeting of the order and has the clerk to call.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lydon?
Here.
Councilor Middlebrooke?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
If we could all stand, the clerk will enter the occasion. Mr. Posey, please.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day with the many blessings we enjoy each and every day. Open our eyes, our ears, and our hearts that we may understand your message and give us wisdom to live each day according to your will. We place in your care the victims of Hurricane Florence, especially those who lost family members or friends. Rain down your peace upon them as they begin the difficult task of rebuilding their lives. In your name we pray. Amen.
So you can play.
The allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'm hoping for a motion on the minute.
Good for the firm, is that ready?
Sir. And motion second, I'll prepare to say aye.
Aye.
The president, the highest having. In our report section, first we have Mr. Wheeler, candidate for House District Forty-seven.
Mr. Wheeler, thank you.
Only has a small part of it.
Right. Mayor, City Councilman, employees, and citizens of Hoover, David Wheeler, and Republican Tommy E. for House District Forty-seven, which represents Parks, Hoover, Parks of that state here. Retired business person, spent about thirty years in a large corporation, and few years with a family-owned business, there in acting in Hoover, that state, and chambers. I'm also vice chair of the board of trustees at the University of Mount Al. Forty-nine days from tomorrow, we will be electing your state representative and other, and I'd like your support in me to represent Parks, Hoover, and Parks of that state here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have an announcement for the Aga Khan Foundation Walk Run Event. Mr. Mayor? Mayor, you want to handle any introductions or?
Please, please, the fine folks are from the Aga Khan Foundation, and they moved their event to Hoover last year. It was a great success, and many of us had an opportunity to visit, and it's just a great organization, and we're so thankful that they've chosen Hoover as the place to represent this event. I love you, you are a family, so this is... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the brief introduction. President and the council members, as Mayor said, that this is our second year again in Hoover, but to let you guys all know that we started with Hoover, where it was sparked almost thirteen years back. But now we are back again in Hoover. It was a great success last year, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to come and speak in front of you guys. We did last year too, and some of you guys were there. We got proclamation from Mayor, and this year again, it is on the Sunday, twenty-third of September. To talk a little bit brief about Aga Khan Foundation, you know, we are all volunteers. I'm the city lead, and they are my project managers and assistant project managers. Actually, we are all volunteers, and to talk much about it, it will take too long, but I will introduce you to our youngest volunteer, who's going to talk more about Aga Khan Foundation, what we do, and where the fun goes, and why the Aga Khan Foundation is so important.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Hae Brani, and it's my honor and pleasure to be here tonight. I'm a healthcare management student at the University of Alabama, and tonight I'm here on behalf of hundreds and thousands of volunteers to speak to you about Aga Khan Foundation. As a member of Aga Khan Development Network, Aga Khan Foundation is one of the largest development organizations. We make long-term investments, from early childhood education to rebuilding countries. We build hospitals and schools. We work with people to serve their communities and rebuild their local economy. Our work impacts millions of people, all over thirty countries. Every penny that is earned through AKF goes to changing lives. Your one dollar equals around eighty dollars in one of those poverty countries. That's not all. That eighty dollars is multiplied by tens and fifteens, close to becoming thousands of dollars by the time it gives to those families. That is enough for providing for a family of four for at least six months. Your dollar provides for a family of six, a family of four for six months. How do we do this? Through partnerships with people, businesses, local organizations, and our government. This is why I'm reaching out to you today. We are having our local event at Butchens Park on September twenty-third. It will consist of a color one, an event called Legend Action, which makes you go through the everyday life of these poverty countries' kids and parents. We will have delicious food, fun activities, and different cultural performances, and much, much more. We would love to have you all there. We are stronger together, and in a world where there are more differences and conflict than ever before, now is the time to come together and drive change for all people. While we have many success stories to share with you, we would love to have much more to do. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope to see you guys on Sunday.
Just to add to it, as she said, that, you know, we are all volunteers, and Aga Khan Foundation has got over one billion volunteers worldwide. And as she was also saying, that, you know, each dollar you contribute goes towards the cause, not even a penny goes towards any admin cost or anything else. That's why it makes Aga Khan Foundation such a unique foundation. On Charity Navigator, it has been rated as three plus A on that, like one of the bestest foundations. So as also she was saying, that, you know, we have our partners like Bill Gates Foundation and some other foundations. They match our funds, so every dollar you contribute, it matches up to seven to eight times. So by the time it reaches the cause, it is almost eight dollars. Your one dollar becomes eight dollars, and if it is going to any third world countries, the value is almost hundred rupees over there in local currency. So we would really request each and every one of you to please do come this Sunday, September twenty-third. The walk starts at noon. I'm going to put some flyers outside, and that has got more details along with the website. And it's a fun-filled day for the whole family. You know, we have got games for kids, and as she was talking about food, different food from different, you know, ethnic backgrounds, like, you know, Mexican food, Indian food, American food, Italian food, so it's a fun day event. And then we have a lot of performances also, so I can assure you, you would not afraid. So please do come. Mr. President, I think you need to pass some kind of a resolution that we got to be there.
You will call him that morning, remind me. I'm not going to say anything about running, because the last time I ran is because I was chased.
No, we will make sure that, you know, we will all walk. The run starts early in the morning, around nine o'clock, but the walk starts at noon. And Secretary of State is going to be there as a chief guest here, and I wish and I hope that I can see all you guys over there with your family and friends, kids, grandkids, and make it a big success, because it's our program, you know? We are from Hoover, we all live in Hoover, and it's our program, so please do come. Thank you so much.
Any pictures, Mr. Mayor? I believe I had any pictures.
Three, two, one. We start a new session.
Next, we have proclamation for Constitution Week, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we have representatives from the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, three chapters here. Tracy Plong, Alcim Badam, and Jesse Byburn. Would y'all please come up, and we will read this proclamation.
Come on. Come on down. Yeah.
We appreciate it. It's been a very serious... So I'll send this to my proclamation. I hope you will just see us. We have children, like the same chap.
Yeah, we're... We're the Hoover chap.
I didn't think I was a baby in the picture.
We will have the proclamation read.
Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberty, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-first anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitutional Convention, providing a historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of our founding fathers and to reflect on the actions of Americans who for the past two-hundred-and-thirty years have defined the words of the Constitution by exercising their rights and responsibilities as citizens. And whereas the Constitution is fundamentally predicated on governance by we the people, making citizens understanding the Constitution and its framework an essential element of our country's future and civic health and popularity. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition for this magnificent night, and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law, nine fifteen, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year of the President of the United States of America designated September seventeen through September twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I am rank dedicated by virtue of the authority from me as mayor of the city of Hoover to hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through September twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all of the rights and responsibilities to exert privilege and all.
Thank y'all so much. Good job you did.
Senator, did you go through the Morris Salters through photograph?
Well, we decided we started a differentiation, that's why we went through two more.
Next, Chief Durden, Mayor, is a swear, sir.
Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce you to our newest police officer. His name is Hudson Jattan. He was a best of our police officer for two and a half years, just started with us one week ago. He is a UAB graduate, and I think what you guys will be excited about, he's a graduate in two thousand nine at Spain Park High School. So I don't think there's anything more humbling than to protect and serve the community that you were raised in. And in talking with Hudson, I think he sees this position as a calling, as I did many, 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 many years ago. But I'd also like to introduce his parents, Randy and Paula. You'll stand up. They're been Hoover residents down in River Chase for about eighteen years, and Hudson's friend, Mary. Mary, thank you for coming too. So again, I want to introduce Hudson. Come on down.
Forever be known as Hudson's friend.
Hudson, you're swearing. Hudson, in now. If you'll raise your right hand, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Hudson Jattan.
Police officer, city of Hoover, Alabama.
Police officer, city of Hoover, Alabama.
You solemnly swear that I will.
Dusoullingly swear that I will.
With the best of the skill and my ability.
With the best of the skill and my ability.
Faithfully discharge all duties required.
Faithfully discharge all duties required.
And execute orders of my superior officers.
And execute the orders of my superior officers.
In all cases to uphold and enforce.
In all cases to uphold and enforce.
Criminal laws and constitution of the state of Alabama.
Criminal laws and constitution of the state of Alabama.
Orders of the city of Hoover.
Orders of the city of Hoover.
Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
And obey the rules governing the police department.
And obey the rules governing the police department.
So help me God.
So help me God, the regulation.
Someone get us a box to pack. All right, next resolution, two thousand eight, nine, eighteen.
This resolution adopts two thousand eighteen salary scale compensation structure and additional compensation practices, but in actual resolution, it's today. The doctors, it shall become effective as of October first, two thousand eighteen.
President, I'll move for a further resolution, two thousand eight, nine, eighteen.
Second.
All right, thank you. I'm going to pass out the, there were some provisions made here kind of at the last minute that are going to be reflected in that document I gave you specifically in the areas of our telecommunication, well, soon before we're telecommunication areas, our emergency communications officers and dispatch, and then the level above that, have been increasing pay grade, as well as the court magistrate, and levels above that also going up in pay grade due to additional salary information that was obtained. So with that, we're here hopefully at the culmination of a very long process, a very long fruitful process, that's going to hopefully make the city the choice for many years to come, make it competitive with all decisions. This is a process we started back in November, our consultant Gallagher, and Mr. President here to come, and we have to answer any questions.
I guess one thing that I'd like to have on the record is that this is not the culmination, that if anyone feels that it's out of description, may have been unnecessary, mishandling, they would need to view, and this process is to do that.
That's absolutely correct. We will have an appeal process, a broad appeal process. It may have the individual employees or departments on behalf of the group of employees. That process will begin after implementation. You know, if this is not to deny this within the next couple of weeks, notifying everyone of their placement on the pay scale and getting our systems updated, we will begin that appeal process, or less immediately after implementation.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mine deals with a police executive officer pay grade.
Yes.
As I've mentioned before, I'd like to, I guess, make a motion that this police executive officer be upgraded to grade eleven, and therefore, based on his duties and responsibilities in the police department, be exempted over time.
Mr. President, I would ask that this Dr. Middlebrooks motion, they continue to call the chair, there may be questions and a lot of issues, I think we're changing this position that we need to discuss.
We have a motion, a top of motion. Is there a second in order to continue conversation? Second motion.
I'll second.
Dr. Middlebrooks made a motion for the exo position, and Mr. Green made a motion to continue to call the chair, that vote.
I'll second Mr. Green's motion.
All right, the motion's second. Now, the second motion, any conversation from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. In doing so, since this is going to be a continued motion, are we going to have funding available there to meet that request? Should it pass, or does any additional funding apply to that?
Funding is allocated in the next item, template study, as is. I, it's, of course, all that's sort of an estimate, so it's possible, but you're also only talking about two pay grades for one position, so it's not a huge amount of big budget.
Any other conversation from the council? Any from the office? Seeing as there are none, it's just going to be a long meeting, there are going to be several comments. Number one, please call for a Bush one. Just sit on your emotions. Does your motion supersede his? Are we sure? So if yours is approved, his motion is moved. If yours is not approved, we're going to continue with his one. Pardon.
Mr. Green? Mr. Lydon?
Aye.
Mr. Middlebrooks?
Nay.
Mr. Murphy?
Nay.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay. The motion prevails, and it will be brought up again and called the chair at some point after additional conversations are held. All right, going back to the resolution itself, any other questions about the salary scale? From the council? And from the office? Seeing as there are none, I don't know, please call for one.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lydon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes. I believe the mayor wanted to speak before we handle this next topic.
Mr. President, I appreciate it. Tonight, you have before you a proposal to pass the budget, and I just want to speak just a minute or so if I could, just talk about some of the goals that we've had over the past four, five weeks, I guess, when we presented that to you. We wanted to provide you with an on-time, balanced, conservative budget. In the budget, we wanted to address things like being the employer of choice and just the care of that action, with your motion to approve the salary schedule. We wanted to address public safety issues out there and improve our public safety. We wanted to enhance the quality of life for our citizens. And we want to adopt a five-year vision for our city, finance. So over the past few weeks, we've all been working together. It's been a very fluid process, just hasn't, has been, has been all the budgets that were passed through. Coming and going, changed things, brought, put things in, taking things out, and that's what we've seen with this budget as well. But you'll see that it's heavily slanted towards public safety. And you may recall, when we were going through some rough waters this past year, I talked about how important public safety is to the city and how the city was really built on the back of public safety. Mesa, also remember me talking about two of our police officers that were involved in two different applications out on Highway two A. Where they, one was injured, they could have been killed, fortunately bystanders stepped in to help them, and we are grateful for that. Back in the day, we had a police officer involved in an altercation that nearly cost him his life. It's a dangerous job, and I don't want to be the one to put them in even more danger. You'll see four new policemen in that budget, and that'll go directly to controlling our streets each and every day. You'll see four school resource officers going directly into the schools, right into the schools, at a time that if everyone agrees, the schools are very vulnerable. And I also talked about the days as a young firefighter, not having the resources or manpower that we needed to safely do the job, and I don't want to see us going back to a fire service, a fire department that goes from four to three men or women on our engine companies, and even worse, going from three to two firefighters on it. It's bad for our citizens, and it's bad for our firefighters. So you'll see eight firefighters added, so that our fire chief has the ability to reduce the risk of missing calls and placing our citizens on the western side of town under the risk of not having those critical fire and life safety resources. The same resources that are available to all of our citizens all throughout the city of Hoover, except for the western part of town. Additionally, it's going to help us maintain that outstanding ISO class one rating that we have. So moving from public safety, we know that the western side of town, tremendous amount of growth going on there, it's the hottest, really hottest thing in Hoover right now. We have to continue to work on traffic management, and we'll see our commitment to finding additional roads out of trace crossings. Our department heads have done just a phenomenal job. We do have more than just public safety needs on our city. There are other things that contribute to the quality of life. Our citizens want great service from our library, and they get it. We need to support our library. Our park, our park service is a wonderful amenity that we have, and it's heavily used. Our citizens expect our parks to be clean, and they expect the lights to work, and their kids are playing ball in them. We have a great rec center. We need to make sure that we have lifeguards always on duty. Two lives were just saved in the last probably six weeks. Our public works department, they work very hard in the worst conditions, right alongside us, making sure that we've got a great city. Ditches are cleaned out, our streets are clean, they build things for us, they can even build a twelve-foot diameter pipe. They're just, no, they do all kinds of things. I could go on and on. Our IT, information technology, they work hard, long hours, accounting, engineering, our court system, they all put a lot into making this a great, great city. Not just a great city, not an average city. We are a great, great city. It costs a lot of running to run a city with high expectations. So we're committed to finding and implementing ways to bring our costs down. We're requiring our department heads to develop a five-year plan process. We're developing a five-year capital plan out of there. We're going to implement a five-year fleet plan. We're engaging in an energy management and time management plan that we fully expect to save lots and lots of dollars on operations for our city. All of these initiatives, once we put, all of these initiatives, once we implement them, will give us the opportunity to continue to reduce our operational costs. So I presented to you what I hope will be an on-time, balanced, and conservative budget. For the first time in nine years, that you'll have an opportunity to vote on a structurally balanced budget, a balanced budget for the city of Hoover. The first time in at least nine years that I can think of, maybe even more, that we've increased our contribution to our reserve fund from a hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand, so quite a commitment there. So let me just say, when I review the budget requests that come in, it's very easy for me to go down line by line and just draw a big red line and say nothing. I just can't do that. I have to count the costs, not just the monetary costs, but the cost of our citizens' health and safety, and the cost of our firefighters, our police officers, our public works employees, all of the people that go support the quality of life for the citizens of Hoover. So tonight, I'm going to ask for each one of you, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Lydon, Mr. Posey, Mr. Smith, Mr. Green, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Middlebrooks. I didn't miss anybody, I hope. I'm going to ask you to support this budget. We all certainly didn't agree on everything in the question. We all know that we don't get everything that we want. But it's a great opportunity to show the citizens of Hoover. The better our city, the better our city, to make it the great city it is. And I look forward to your support tonight and anxious and eager to answer any additional questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Prior to Dr. Lopez participating, Mr. Corley, resolution fifty-eight, seventy-one, eighteen.
This resolution amends the city's budget for fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Right. This resolution approves the budget for fiscal year two thousand, right? As set forth in the resolution.
More motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-eight, seventy-one, eighteen.
Second. Motion and second. Any comments or questions from the council?
Mr. President. Earlier this year, Porter, Lyman, and Company warned us that the city would face financial difficulties unless revenue increased. The mayor and his staff warned us that eleven million dollars of additional revenue at a minimum was needed to keep the city operating as is. Both our police chief and fire chief warned us that their departments were struggling to provide the volume of protection needed by our citizens. As a result, the council approved three tax increases. Since then, since then, it has also come to light that our city employees' pay is no longer competitive with neighboring municipalities. For these reasons, I expected and fully supported increased funding for the police and fire departments and pay increases for city employees, as I did tonight. However, other than these necessary funding increases, I also expected and believe the citizens of Hoover expected more of a belt-tightening budget. Unfortunately, that is not the budget proposal we received. Therefore, I cannot support the twenty nineteen budget estimate.
Anything else from the council? And from the audience? Everybody running in and wanting? Last time for the council. Dr. Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Nay.
Mr. Lyman?
Nay.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed. The resolution. And the budget are now. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-one. Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the city's budget for fiscal year ending September thirty, two thousand and eighteen, as set forth in the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution sixty-eight, I'm sorry, fifty-eight, sixty-one, eighteen.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Dr. Lopez, I believe we've got one addition since Thursday.
That is correct. Earlier today, I sent out a revised Exhibit A with an additional item. This is an item that was actually in the proposed fiscal nineteen budget. We found out that if we go ahead and get a PO in to this company tomorrow for the pumper, we could save twenty-one thousand dollars due to price increases. So we moved it out of two thousand and nineteen, put it on the amendment for two thousand and eighteen, so we can move forward with that.
Chief, you're going to get to keep the twenty-one thousand?
Sorry.
You're going to get to keep the twenty-one thousand, chief?
I don't know.
There's actually not twenty-one thousand. We would have had to increase the budget.
Oh, okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-three, eighteen. Mr. Corley.
Invitation to bid for electrical maintenance and repair services, bid number eighteen dash zero two five. Received twenty-three vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list, and the patient's bid was also posted on the City of Hoover website. Bids were open on Wednesday, August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Two bids were received. Unro electric company, Inc., was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications and requirements with a bid of sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. This resolution accepts this bid and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the bidder for work to be performed.
We've approved resolution fifty-eight, sixty-three, eighteen.
Second. I have a motion, second. Comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing as hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-four, eighteen. Mr. Corley.
Invitation to bid for Hoover City Hall rerouting, bid number eighteen dash zero one six, from two hundred and one vendor listed on the City of Hoover vendor list, and the invitation to bid was also posted on the Hoover website. Bids were opened on Tuesday, August first, two thousand and eighteen. Three bids were received. Pecat America Southeast LLC was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications and requirements for the space bid, and alternates one and three in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, and forty-four thousand, respectively, on additional fourteen calendar days. The bid is accepted, and the mayor is authorized to execute agreement with the bidder for work to be performed.
We've approved resolution fifty-eight, sixty-four, eighteen.
Second. I have a motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Any, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Before we move on to the next resolution, Mr. Alho.
Sir.
Do you think you're going to get to something? The council had come to view in the mayor's office a number of months ago to cease the remodeling work on the third floor of City Hall. Because of the funding issues, even though there was no funding issue with this, we just felt that it was a book ban. Those remodeling costs are borne by the state, by monies that are given from the state strictly for the maintenance and building and municipal structures and property. Talked in the work session, we've been, decided that we did not need a resolution to start work again. Is my question of my colleagues, anybody have a problem getting started? Yes, sir.
No, Mr. President.
Yes, you're being employed.
Thank you, sir.
Well. Next, item eleven. Resolutions fifty-eight, sixty-five, eighteen, and fifty-eight, sixty-six, eighteen. Mr. Corley, I think we'll vote this together.
All right. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-five, eighteen, authorizes the mayor to execute a developer-installed extension of Main Street in a letter of authorization to the Permian Water Works Board regarding a water main extension to be installed within the Hawksbury Road right-of-way. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-six, eighteen, authorizes the mayor to execute a developer-installed extension of Main Street in a letter of authorization to the Permian Water Works Board regarding a water main extension to be installed within the municipal drive road right-of-way from the police training facility.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolutions fifty-eight, sixty-five, eighteen, and fifty-eight, sixty-six, eighteen.
Second. Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing as hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-seven, eighteen. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute assignment of benefits to bring out these BCS insurance companies, Blue Cross, the Blue Shield of Alabama, and a BCS insurance company scheduled for stock loss insurance.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-eight, sixty-seven, eighteen.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Mr. Corley, if you maybe give us a quick synopsis for those who aren't encouraged and certain for accomplishing.
Glad to. This is a renewal we see about this time every year for the city's stock loss insurance, for insurance plan. This is a renewal, as mentioned, with the same company, the same company, seven years. Through our benefits consultant, we did solicit, it's our quotes, I should say, from thirteen companies, and then sixteen of us were added.
Any comments or questions from the council?
President, I'd just like to note, I'll be abstaining on this, I'll please.
Mr. Lyman will be abstaining. Anything from the audience? Once again, anything from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. Now, some points. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-eight, eighteen. Mr. Corley.
This resolution clears the following properties as public nuisances due to weep and grass. Twenty-one thirty-six Ivy Lane, one thousand three Alford Avenue, twenty-three thirty-five Deerwood Road, and five forty-two O'Neill Drive on Goodell, Alabama, and orders to evade their events provided under Alabama law.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution fifty-eight, sixty-eight, eighteen.
Second. Motion, second. Mr. Mack?
Yes, sir.
Come for your every-two-week conversation.
Yes, sir.
If they are, I mean, pictures are forced upon the bank.
Yes, sir.
Voters are taken today.
Four properties, first hearing of this, declared a public nuisance. Two of these, y'all, y'all voted before, so y'all probably recognize that.
Okay. Do not show the public hearing on the agenda. So we need to hold a public hearing on Tuesdays?
I want to see. Oh, yes, sir. These, this is just the, this is the public.
This is the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So we're holding a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is anybody here to speak for or against the properties? So much for the public hearing. So we had, we had some properties entered into correction.
Yes, sir. Two of the properties were taken care of by the owner, and to my satisfaction, it's been removed, and we also left.
Okay. And that leaves two.
Well, that leaves four. It started out with six, and two were taken care of, and that left four. We all voted on tonight.
You identified the four?
Yes, sir. They were the same four Mr. Corley read from Ivy Lane, Alford Avenue, Deerwood Road, and O'Neill Drive.
Make sure the record properly reflects it. Any comments or questions from the council for Mr. Mack?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mac particularly, twenty-one thirty-six Ivy Lane.
Yes, sir.
How did that one, did that one get by us for years and years and years?
Yes, sir. The owner passed away, and right now, it's just held up, you know, with the new, right now, it's in probation, and it's just held up for that reason.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought we were like Mr. Green's house, but I know a visiting wouldn't allow that. Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, there was one, uh, there was one of those that Jim was saying last time that they, they cut it after we send the notice, and they've done this routinely. They do that again?
Not on, not these right here. We do have some that Jim and Dave would wait for a notice from the city, and then they cut it, you know, right before, maybe, or sometimes right before we cut it.
Yeah. That's unfortunate. We're not, we're not here to tell them to cut their grass for our parents. Maybe we need to have by somebody.
Anything else from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing as hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, sixty-nine, eighteen. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the Permian Water Works to dissolve a hydrant in Ferry Lane on the east side of the church parking lot.
We've approved resolution fifty-eight, sixty-nine, eighteen.
Second. I have a motion, second. Chief, Housekeeping, Fire Department.
Mr. President, council, thank you for hearing me. The staff committee, I received a call from a concerned citizen. He was also a city employee about the installation of a hydrant on this property, specifically on Cherry Avenue. Some of you remember Cherry Avenue's block, dead for years, and there's trees that used to be there. So that's been cleared out. The Burning Points Church was bought by another organization, being renovated. And the building does not have fire sprinklers. It's not required to have fire sprinklers. But it does have enough renovation to require a fire flow of three thousand gallons a day. So, I think the issue with the hydrant installation where we're installing it is there's a traffic concern. But in order for us to have the hydrant where it needs to be within two hundred and twenty-five feet of the building, according to code, the Fire Marshal's Office elected to have it installed as a public hydrant, which actually will save the property under about thirty-five thousand dollars instead of installing it as a private hydrant. So, that is the reason we're installing the hydrant on Cherry Avenue. There is another hydrant a little over three hundred feet, current hydrant. This particular building requires three hydrants in order to be protected because it does not sprinkle, fire protection sprinklers. I just want to clarify that, so everyone knows in the community that we're not installing the hydrant there just because we installed it there because that's where it is.
Was a concerned citizen, the man on the property, with the hydrant.
Not sure where they live, but they're just concerned about traffic, and I tried to inform them that we could address the traffic issue at another time. And in order to address with this project, the hydrant is installed.
Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Just going to have a long-term discussion, then. It's a big hearing in the mic, so all of those at home can read it. They're on YouTube.
Hi, I'm Angela Roper Seal. I was a concerned citizen. I live at twenty-two, twenty-four Cherry Lane. And the gate that he was speaking about, where the fire hydrant would go, separates public roadway from the church parking lot. Several neighbors have been concerned that the gate would be removed. I don't think anyone would have any concern with the fire hydrant as long as the gate could stay and just be made accessible to emergency vehicles only. That is the concern from the neighborhood, not the hydrant specifically. We would just like to be able to see the gate stay.
I think, just my opinion, the hydrant is, it sounds like you're okay with the hydrant.
Right.
Sounds like maybe you need to move some of your staff or even someone in engineering to talk about it, for us to move on.
Absolutely do that. I just want to be able to voice the concern here initially, so that it is out. Thank you.
Right.
Mr. President, to that issue, when we had a conversation with the congregation that has now obtained that property, we talked to them about the history of that, that whole gate situation, and that it would need to remain, and would have to be for emergency access only. So they agreed to that. They're going to, I think they've already done some landscape maintenance on their side, on the parking lot side, to allow passage of emergency vehicles. So that is the intent, to keep the gate in place and have emergency traffic only. And it'll actually be, be some signage put on there because we had some trash dumping, and I think there was a over a trailer or something that was kind of abandoned down there, we want to keep it clear. So it'll have some signage put in, but the intent is not for the gate to be removed.
Very good. Now you have it in the minutes, so when they're available on mine, turn them out and save them for twenty years. Hopefully, you'll never need them. Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution fifty-eight, seventy-eighteen. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute underground power in Alabama Power Company, provide power for the Hoover event complex. The maintenance supply pad area.
We've approved resolution fifty-eight, seventy.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Rest of them? You want to, give us about fifteen, fifteen seconds.
Thank you very much. This is the ultimate Alabama power needs for us to be able to provide power to the splash pad and the tennis and soccer slash football slash football.
Any questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing as hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, nay. If opposed, nay, the unit has it. Item sixteen is an ABC application, Yawara Festival Food Service Inc. For the Moss Rock Festival to be held November third and fourth, twenty eighteen, six oh one Preserve Way. Do you have a motion to approve?
I'm, I'm very sorry about the. Um, Mr. President, I move for approval of resolutions number five eight seventy-eighteen.
Second.
All right, I will draw that motion. Uh, and approve for the ABC application for Yawara Festival Food Service.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any comments, questions from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I have a question, not necessarily pertaining to the ABC application, but I remember last year, some, um, there were some parking issues there. Uh, I know we run out of a great shuttle service to this festival in and out of there. Uh, this was pertaining to a family with special needs and had issues, um, getting access. So I had mentioned to her that she could probably just, you know, find one of the public parking spaces or, or even park on the road, and there was a question of not, that the roads, uh, were not being allowed to be parked on during that festival. Can anybody speak on that, or these roads are public, as long as they meet the lift requirement, can they be used for parking?
Roads interior to preserve?
Yes.
I'd have to consult with our business manager about what plan is there, but I can think that we do have accessible, uh, city shuttles, and so if the roads can't be used for adjacent parking, we'll make sure that we put a vision in place to make sure that the shuttles handle these special needs.
Thank you.
Or give one of the mayors a bit of. Any other questions, any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay, the unit has it. Item seventeen is an ABC application for restaurant retail liquor, Baja California Cantina and Grill, two LLC, doing businesses, Baja California Cantina. At sixteen ninety-four Montgomery Highway, suite one eighty-four in Hoover, five two one six. This is their new restaurant, previously approved site, previously the Iron Forest Cafe.
Mr. President, I move to approve the ABC application for Baja California Cantina Grill.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any comments, questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay, the unit has it. Item eighteen is a public hearing to consider the request of Mr. Richard Johnson, S.B. Dev Corp. His request and conditional use approval for a community amenity to include clubhouse, string porch, garden shed, pavilion, parking, lawn, and sidewalks to be built in the Abington subdivision, D.H. Investments LLC as property owner. The property is owned, U.D.P.R. one, land, single family. Uh, is there anybody here to speak for or against? Looky there, Mr. Johnson. It's been a while.
Yes, sir.
Missed this.
I missed it. Richard Johnson represents nine D.H.'s Investors, uh, third, five forty-five Market Street, we were out of that one. I'm too, before you tonight, with positive recommendations, we're claiming to have a request to have you approve for a conditional use amenity area for our Abington development. Abington is, uh, a new, new development for us, which lies parallel to the city of Trenton Parkway, between Brockcat Parkway and Fleming Parkway, contains approximately a hundred and forty-seven lots. This is a, a linear park in the interior of redevelopment, and I have drawings, you have not seen it, let me show you.
How many front doors?
One forty-seven.
One forty-seven. Nice to meet you.
This, this is our first, this is our first targeted, not limited restricted attempt at, at, at marketing to a city, an older age, people like me, above.
I had a lot of experience with this, because I had hair back then, so. Any questions from the council for this public hearing? Anything, anybody from the audience here to speak in this public hearing? If not, public hearing is complete, open to a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of conditional use, approval for community amenity.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Other child, comments or questions from the council? Any audience? Seeing hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay, the unit has it.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna have a public hearing to consider the request of Mr. Randall H. Goggins. His request to recently annex property at seventy-one six Cahapa Valley Road. He's owned from Shelby County A-one Agriculture to Hoover C-two Community Business District. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here for the apple? Give us your name and address and what you plan on doing.
My name's Randy Goggins, uh, my address is two two eight Hawthorne Street, Birmingham, three five two four two. And, uh, what we're planning to do with this property is a church on the present. The property to the south of this, figures this property, the church property, uh, annexed in the city of Hoover, it's owned C-two, which is what we're asking for, for this property. Everything across the street, uh, from this property is cators all development. So we feel like we're right in line with all the other zones in the, in the neighborhood, and we plan to redevelop the property.
Very good. Anybody else here to speak for or against in the public hearing? I have a brother named Kip. Uh, he was away. Um, public hearing is complete, and Mr. Corley, second reading ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four hundred.
This ordinance amends Hoover's zoning ordinance by rezoning seventy-one sixty-five of Valley Road from Shelby County A-one to Hoover C-two.
Any comments, questions from the council?
I move for adoption of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four hundred.
It's a good comment.
Second.
Once again, any comments, questions from council or the audience? Seeing hearing none, all in favor, please call the roll.
Mr. Green.
Uh.
Mr. Ryan.
Uh. Um.
Mr. Murphy.
Um.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye. Aye. Item twenty is first reading of ordinance. Congratulations, sir. Got the gift.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four one, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends Hoover's municipal code for banking sales ten percent, in certain circumstances. Take a reading with consideration for adoption, I'll put first, two thousand.
Mr. Lopez or Mr. Wyatt here to speak on this? What is going to permit, uh, is currently unpermitted.
Uh, basically, excuse me, basically what this ordinance does is allows a permanent business, sets up a permanent business to, uh, for its regular business purposes, only the site, sports or whatever, if they have a sale, put a tent out in the parking lot for no purposes, so it does not, uh, the, uh, identify to like, uh, any type of other type of tents or any farmers markets, community events, or anything like that, strictly for permanent business, in order to have their things out in, in like parking lot.
How many times does it limit that?
It, it's like now ten, ten times a year, five times per year.
Is for themselves or for anybody?
For themselves.
So if somebody else wanted to have it, like, say, on their property, they don't have it?
Uh, they are limited under this ordinance, spells it out.
Under existing ordinance or new ordinance?
Under the existing ordinance, they can't have that out.
Okay.
And if it's new ordinance, the business that is located there is the one that can have tents.
Right, let's say somebody's gonna have a tent sale, food trucks, is that off Shades Crest Road? Are they gonna be limited, how many times per year are they being allowed to use somebody else's parking lot?
Yeah, now, food trucks is an entirely separate ordinance. Uh, as far as the other, they would not be allowed to put up a tent under this. Food trucks are totally different, they, they operate by, in separates.
They're about people that want to sell something.
They would not be able to do that on property.
They would not be able to do that on somebody else's parking lot.
That is correct, under this ordinance.
Under the new one.
Under the new one, it's specifically says permanent place for its regular business purposes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that in the minutes.
Mr. President, but.
I think it's gonna come up.
Just, just to clarify, though, it says in here further, this section should not apply to craft shows, art shows, farmers markets.
That is correct.
So if those types of events are located on a business property, you're saying they will not be allowed?
That they are covered by the ordinance, the regional ordinance, that was adopted under special needs.
But, but it.
Would it, would it?
Would, would it or would not be allowed?
Well, it depends on where it was, you couldn't just put it on the side of Shades Crest Road and put a tent in sometimes. If it was community event, well, let's take Moss Rock.
A community event on commercial property?
That is, that is a little bit different, yes, it have to be, uh, basically it's covered over the, the ordinance, and there's certain rules that they would have on that.
Mr. President, my mate, so, so you're saying if you wanted to have a special event on your commercial property, you just apply for a different permit?
That is correct, these under the other ordinance, special events ordinance, and there's certain rules that are guided by that, and certain procedures, permits and everything like that. This one, what it is, is put in there just to be sure, was clarification, that this was only for the regular business because it is not allowed.
Just to make sure everybody understood. Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Mr. Schultz, come on down.
I think it's, uh, Robert Schultz, three forty-eight Alamo Road Drive. I think it's still not clear, uh, based upon the comments from the council and from Mr. Lopez as to what this covers. We, let's take, for example, the, uh, the tent sale that occurs twice a month on Shades Crest Road and Park Avenue, uh, what would that be covered under? Would that require a special permit? Would that not apply because the business is located there? How are these business owners going to understand what they are supposed to do?
Now, if it's more, let's give a hypothetical.
That's a definite, so let's go with the definite.
Well, but, let's have the, say you got somebody running a business out of a little train carriage, and they've got a parking lot, and they let people put up tents to sell, cars of money, jewelry, whatever, and there's a food truck there, which is under separate ordinance. Um, if they are selling their own goods out of that little, little rack of the little carriage, uh, they're gonna be limited as to the number of tent sales that they can have. And Mr. Lopez, these people, that, that, this little red carriage, uh, they're gonna let them come use their parking lot. What are their caps?
Okay, under this ordinance, it is, they would not be allowed to be able to do that. From what I understand, the, uh, what we're talking about, it would be a say that you have a permanent place business, you put your tent out there, and then you put twenty or thirty of the tents out there. This ordinance, you're not allowed to do that, Mr. Corley.
Okay, what if, what if the little red carriage is gonna have a tent? They're gonna let other people use their property, no other such.
Under this, they can't do that. Okay, it have to be, any of the, the.
I thought that's where we were headed, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
At the, at the end of this ordinance, says this section does not apply to, um, other things, the setup of temporary business location in community events.
That's fine.
So long as these personal events are secured, you require license, it's considered.
So.
Not permitted.
So they're not permitted.
What it does do is permit your principal business owner to have a tent sale.
That is what this does, not essentially.
But if they're gonna let somebody else hold a tent sale.
That is not the way I review ordinance.
Okay.
This section does not apply to that, it also applies for, uh, to any tent larger than four. If you get under that, not, it's under that.
If it's a community event, if what you're, you're talking about is a community event, then that would, that would be a different.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that. Facts I'm working on, is exactly what you said, like a business that allows other things to happen, like a tents. That's not considered a community event, unless it is an organized community event, that is entirely different.
So the community brought these others there, and the little red carriage said, yes, you can use my parking lot, everything's fine.
That is correct, that looks under the other special ordinance that we were talking about. You know, the facts I was talking about is just, they just said, everybody come, we'll sell jewelry, things like that, that's not permissible. If there is a community event, and it's an organized community event, and it comes under the special ordinance, which, uh, which is outlines the things of the permits now, that is a community event. Operating on the assumption of this ordinance, that is not a community event, basically, what we have.
Please, you can confuse.
Absolutely.
Had my little red carriage there. Do I?
I think enforcing this is gonna be difficult based upon the, the language of it, so we'll see how it plays out.
We figure we just let you handle all of this, the office is closed on Saturday, so. Yes, sir.
Also, I want to clarify the special, the permits, private, that's one, private property.
Let me see, there. All right. Where are all those constables? All right, any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, it isn't for a free. I was practicing. I was practicing for something down the road. Um, all right. Item twenty-one, first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four oh two, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends Hoover's municipal code, chapter eleven point five three seven, regarding the time and place of meetings of the superment policy complex advisory committee. Second reading, consideration for adoption will be on October first, two thousand and eighteen.
All right, uh, this is a first reading.
All right, yeah, um, this is something that, uh, hopefully won't be too controversial. Uh, this is to reset the, the time for, um, for our quarterly meetings for the state advisory, for sports complex advisory committee, the last time frame was too quick to get funding out, and also, uh, if the facility was booked, which is good, you had no other place to get it, so. So I would move to suspend the rules in consideration of ordinance number eighteen dash two four zero two, to go ahead and do that now.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Now, in favor, please call the roll.
Mr. Green.
Uh.
Mr. Ryan. Mr. Delbrug.
Aye.
Mr. Murphy.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, now that we've suspended the rules, we will bring second reading and vote on ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four oh two. Any additional readings required, Mr. Corley? All right, any other conversations from the council, from the audience?
Mr. President, I move for immediate adoption of, uh, ordinance on eighteen dash four oh two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Now, in favor, please call the roll. Uh. Uh.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item twenty-two is to set public hearings from Monday, October fifteenth, six o'clock, in the chambers, to consider the following requests which come forward with positive recommendation from September tenth, meeting. Mr. John Razabuison, Dallas Strength and Associates, requesting following of property located twenty-three eleven John Hopkins Parkway, owned by Carrot, Carrot Bamar, correct, uh, is owned, C-one Neighborhood Shopping District, requesting, let's see. Has this been corrected since Thursday? There was part, it was the height that was.
It had to do with other materials.
Okay. I'm just gonna put you through, having to hear my voice for another few minutes. Uh, this has been requested by the applicant to continue the first reading due to the October first, twenty eighteen feet. That'll take a minute.
So we'll move to continue.
First reading.
We're just sitting in public hearing today, huh?
I guess we were, and that was gonna be the end, but this is the applicant's last, so.
So we'll have to, um, yeah, we, we wait for the first, actual first hearing, for first, okay. So if there's no motion now, we'll just wait till the first reading.
Item B is, gas on div, grill one end, it's requesting conditional use of the, to allow the construction of the parking lot on one point two three nine acres of the property located eighteen thirty-four Montgomery Highway, Chase Forker Center. This is for the purpose of providing additional parking for users located in eighteen seventy Chase Drive. The owner of the property is Chase Forker Center LLC, and the property is owned, P.O. Plant Office District. Public hearing at the I show was fifty down. Item C, US Steel and Dr. Paul Warren Savage, Jr., representing Spine and Sports Properties LLC, requesting approval of the Fourteenth Amendment to the Trace Crossings PUD to add recently annexed property, property like point six two acres, located at one one eight Mars Hill Road and rezoned from Jefferson County CP, Perp Commercial, Trace Crossings PUD, PC, Plant Commercial. Property is owned by Spine and Sports Properties LLC. That will be a first reading. Item D, proposed amendment to the municipal code, appendix I zoning, Article seven, supplemental regulations, section five dot O G accessory structures, that too will be a first reading. City of Hoover seeks to rezone two hundred and fifty-nine point two acres of recently annexed property, owned by the freshwater land trust located between Ross Bridge Parkway and Shades Crest Road from Jefferson County, I three industrial and A-one agricultural to Hoover A-one agriculture. That too will be a first reading. Mr. Wyatt, I'm Mr. Bill. Yes, sir.
Firm that, that that constitutes a first reading, but it's.
We're all first reading.
Correct.
Okay. I don't want to take.
Okay.
Did we save any money? Did we save any money about these things?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That worked.
Mr. Wyatt. If I review the bills, I would move to be taken full as presented.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor say aye. Aye. If those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Any comments or questions from the council? Mayor?
Yes, we're going to have our ground writing for school playground, splash pad, office, and company, that, it's the ninth day, February mark, May, and back in August, hard, many signs on, they have looked, ours could be, be, or do it, or provide as well, outside for that, drives.
R S V P P. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? That? I'll take a motion. You do it, sir. Second, all in favor, and leave.